I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please. Thank you. Or we can open up those doors and you could sit in the back. We don't have to stand up. Chief Moore, would you, Steve, if I could get, if you could open those doors so people could sit in the very back? It's nice to have standing room only, but not standing if you don't have to stand. Thank you so much. We're going to call the continuation of the City of Bloomington Committee of the Whole meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Mathie.
Here.
Alderman Page.
Here.
Alderman Malumboy.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you. We're going to start out with a proclamation. And just to present this condemning the recent violent acts in Alexandria, Virginia on June 14th, 2017. And I will read the proclamation. And as where as the City of Bloomington City Council joins the nation in supporting those impacted by the violent acts of Virginia, excuse me, Alexandria, Virginia that occurred the morning of Wednesday, June 14th, 2017, and where violence is not an acceptable solution to political disputes. And now therefore we condemn the recent violent actions in Alexandria, Virginia and extend our thoughts and prayers to those who are impacted by them. Signed, this state, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington. Want to move on to the next, oops, excuse me, item, and that is we have minutes of the previous committee of the whole, May 15th, 2017. And I believe Alderman Burgess had a correction.
Yes, it just shows that I was there at that meeting and I was not able to attend.
Even though we may think you're omnipresent, that didn't quite work that way. So would we have a motion to approve with that amendment to the minutes?
To make that motion, yeah.
Okay, moved by Alderman Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Black. And if you want to go ahead and go ahead and vote, please. The motion carries nine to nothing, there are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay, and that's the only vote, of course, that we take this evening. We move next to, actually, we should have done point of order myself, public comment beforehand, this is the business. So we have, you have up to three minutes. And again, public comment, you can come if you've got specific issues and need to be solved, you can come to the mayor's open house on every Friday before regular Monday city council meeting from 4:30 to 5:30, don't need an appointment, you can just come on by. So I'm going to read these in groups of three so you can come forward. Jen Carrillo and Sunny Garcia and Michael Herzog. Okay, start out with Jen.
Mayor and city council members, on behalf of the various organizations advocating for the establishment of a civilian review board, which now include the ACLU of Central Illinois, Black Lives Matter Bloomington Normal, NAACP, the Bloomington Normal Branch, Not in Our Town, YWCA, McLean County, the Central Illinois Pride Health Center, the Prairie Pride Coalition, the League of Women Voters, and Illinois People's Action, we want to thank you for the work that you've done on this issue, for the time that you've taken to meet with community members on this, and for the ordinance included in this week's packet. We think this is a great proposal that embodies the recommendations that we put forward to you last month. We believe that all of us are here today because we want to make Bloomington a better community for everyone. We believe the establishment of the proposed PSCRB will make our community safer, stronger, and better equipped to face challenges moving forward, and we encourage you to keep working to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sunny Garcia and then Michael Herzog and Candace Bird, I believe.
Hello, my name is Sunny Garcia and I'm a board member with Illinois People's Action. I am here on behalf of our organization to express our support for the proposed Public Safety and Community Relations Board. I'm also speaking today because I have a serious issue with the exclusion of certain members of our community from serving on this board. I want to start off by saying that I'm encouraged by the work of the city council to drafting an ordinance that provides the people with the opportunity to have a stronger voice when it comes to community and police relations. We will create, we will create a greater sense of trust and accountability by providing a civilian-led alternative that receives and reviews complaints. This is a big step in the right direction. However, I am concerned as we take this step, we are leaving many people, people like me, behind due to the pervasive narrative that cuts out people with past felony convictions from positive growth in our community. Many of you know me or know of me because of my years of work that I've engaged in the community in efforts to make our city and state a better place to live. My commitment to this effort moved me to run for city council during this past election. As many of you are aware, I was forced to drop my campaign due to a statute that excludes people with past felony convictions from serving in local elected office. Several of you, including my opponent during this election, Mr. Black, graciously voiced concerns about that statute. Well, now you have the power to make sure that this justice does not make its way into the Public Safety and Community Relations Board. You have the power to hold true to your values and make space for everyone to do good for our community. We are fortunate to live in an active community, and many of the people who keep this community moving are people with backgrounds like mine. People like myself who have made mistakes in the past but have turned their lives around to serve their community should not be punished for the rest of their lives for mistakes that were made years ago. We call on you today to enact the ordinance establishing the Public Safety and Community Relations Board and to amend it to ensure that every committed member of our community has the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Herzog and then Candace and John Walton.
Thank you all for your time. Michael Herzog, I'm the second vice president here of Bloomington Normal Branch, the NAACP. I'm speaking on behalf of the alliance in general, and we just want to again affirm the idea that we support the ordinance as presented to you all this evening, and appreciate the work you've done thus far in moving this along. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Candace and then John.
Hello, my name is Candace, and I am a resident born and raised in Bloomington Normal. I am a member of Black Lives Matter, and I have been a part of the creation of this PSCRB from the beginning. Many of you on the committee today recognize me because I have sat down with several of you and had meetings. We have with you in several meetings over the last few months, as well as Chief Heffner and the mayor. With the persistent help of our allies, together we have come a long way to get to this point. Even though you have seen my face, I don't believe that all of you really know me. I have poured my heart into several causes in my lifetime, starting with Illinois People's Action, working hard to protect my neighbors and my country from predatory lenders. I was also in full acting support in the Keep Our Families Together campaign. I am also an advisor on the Jefferson Street Community House Board. I dedicate my time and my money to help those with no voice better the lives of those who have lost hope, and I will continue to do so. However, within this ordinance, I feel this may be the end of the line for me. I, like many others, hardworking folks, fall under this category of having no felonies, of having no felon being on this board. A piece of the ordinance states that no one with a felony, not even with the statute of limitation, is allowed to be a part of this board. So let us not mention the employment and the residential issues that having a felony causes. We can just add this to a list of things that I cannot be a part of. As per a study in 2014, 25% of black Americans are charged as felons, as to 6.5% of non-black Americans. One of the many things that just go to show the disproportionality that results from systemic racism in policing and the criminal justice system. This ordinance was created to improve our current situation. Let us not allow racial disparities to dictate such a positive change in our community. Regardless of what is on paper, my past does not dictate my future. My past does not dictate my ability, it does not dictate my education, or the hard work that I put into making a better society. A charge does not dictate who I am or what I am about. I am in full support of this PSCRB, and I also support community oversight of the police. But I challenge each and every one of you today to think about who you are leaving out and to amend the ordinance so it allows others like myself to continue the fight for equality. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I wasn't planning on speaking here, but I saw you here in me, so I thought I had asked a few, put together a few items of question. You want to have people on this board that have a reputation for fairness, integrity, impartiality, and a sense of public service, so I'm wondering if you want to make that appointment by the board to require a unanimous decision on the appointment of that person so that person's integrity is clearly seen as someone impartial? Having come from a place where certain people were untouchable because they were friends of certain connected people, I want to make sure that there is no idea that there is connection between them. Also, in opening up the complaint board, could it be made online so that anybody with a notarized copy can make a complaint and not have to go either to the police department or the new review board to file those complaints? Those complaints would go to the review board, but doing that. And I also have another last question on here, sorry. But it mentions the staffing assistance, and do we have at this point what that's going to entail? Because from the information in this document that you have, the civilian oversight and review enforcement item, there is going to be a lot of assistance that this board may be needing, and just wanting to make sure that we understand what we are talking about as far as the cost of these items. Thank you very much, and good luck with your deliberations.
Again, just to clarify, we don't exchange opinions, but we will, some of the things that you've mentioned and others, we will, I'm sure, be addressing as we discuss this further.
Just wanted to bring the question up.
Thank you, John. Thanks. Okay, at this point, we do have an ordinance on the floor.
Mayor, I'm sorry, there was another public comment that came in. Were we reading this into the record or just making it a part of the record?
It would just go with, you know, emails, any other letters that came in, just so the council would have that as part of the record.
Okay, okay, good. Just as a little bit of background information, I think that probably most everyone knows that the, I did a little bit of homework in talking to other mayors throughout the United States, certainly the mayor of St. Petersburg, Florida that I know, as well as the mayor of Indianapolis have had police review boards, again, one underscore review as opposed to oversight, but review boards have, their perspective on it is that it has very often been very helpful, even if there aren't actually a large number of formal complaints that are necessarily filed. Sometimes, and I was surprised at this, a large chunk of cases are handled where they just recommend an apology. And that, and again, that's not everything, but there is apparently in some cases about 20, 25% were the figures that were cited to me in St. Petersburg, where that wound up being part of what was suggested. Again, it also can mean that this is a board that would basically report its findings, back conclusions, to the police chief, who can take them under advisement and respond in whatever way the police chief thinks is appropriate. Certainly, there are varying models of citizen review boards that are in our packet that were discussed, lots of information has been presented. And just to make it clear, this is a discussion tonight, we are not acting on this. We, any, if there seems to be some amendments are in order, or whatever, we can certainly have the staff make those changes. The action on this is scheduled, is it correct, Mr. Hales, for one week from this evening? The 26th?
Certainly, as you and I talked, that could be placed on that council meeting.
Okay, at this point, I will open up the floor for comments, questions, concerns by members of the council. Alderman Black.
I guess I'll kick it off. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to staff and everybody who's participated in this process thus far. I had sent an email out, I believe it was this morning, to the council, that I think Jeff took a look at with some questions and some clarifications, and it got sent back out this afternoon, so I would encourage everybody to take a look at that. Just a couple of pieces that I would want to talk about, at least touch on, and really in no particular order. There were just a couple of small verbiage adjustments that I was thinking would be part of a final proposal, and I know that we don't like to do these sorts of amendments on the floor, so I'm hoping that this council can reflect on that email.
Could you read those for us?
Okay.
For the record, for the audience and others?
Yeah.
And then, there's no amendments right now because we're not actually passing anything. But I would also underscore, we should not have to be fearful of making amendments on the floor, that's how city policy is made.
Oh, no, I'm not fearful of that, but since we can't vote on this evening, I want to make sure that this would be included in any kind of final, final recommendation for the, for the council.
Alderman, if I could just interject, we do have Gabe Nivergal here from sort of in Northrop, Jeff could not be here, so he's here to kind of assist us and consider any changes so forth, so, yeah, he'll be assisting with it.
Number one, there's a couple ones here, but, and again, in no particular order, you know, I was inquiring why we call it citizen complaints, you know, why can't we just call it resident complaints? And I think one of the answers is, is that we don't want to just limit it to people who live in Bloomington. But I'd like to see maybe something that's more general, more universal, I don't know what the best way, the best legal verbiage for that would be, there really wasn't a recommendation back, but something about just saying citizen, I think, implies something that I'm not sure that we want to do. The other one that I was looking for is, instead of all the he and she, I think there was one point where we were just going to say the complainant when referring to, that was going to be in section six, if I recall. So that email's floating around, so I hope the council will take a look at that and reflect, I know it came in later this afternoon. And the piece that I would talk about is that this is a work in progress, this is the first time you're seeing this in Bloomington. I don't, I don't think Normal has any plans to do anything like this, but I'm excited for us to have the opportunity to really kind of engage with the public in a new way, something that we've all talked about extensively. The piece about the felonies, I know that a lot of folks have sent us emails talking about that sort of thing, and I agree that it's really very unfortunate that having a felony precludes people from getting involved. I mean, you have now a new congressman who, you know, body slammed someone and got elected the next day, I mean, it's crazy what's allowed. And it's unfortunate that our state statute really prohibits people from getting involved in local office.
Notably not governors.
Yeah, isn't that funny? Yeah. I mean, I guess Rod could come back, I don't know. Hopefully not. But my piece with this, because it's an appointed office and not an elected office, that makes it a little tougher, and I don't really know of any other precedent on any board or commission where we allow folks with those types of criminal records, unless somebody can correct me, that we would allow that person participating. So, while I agree that it's something that precludes people from elected offices, I think is totally unfair, but from a board or commission perspective, I think that because it's appointed, that's something that we should be taking into consideration. And perhaps because this is a work in progress, and this is so new, and this is such a culture change for us, and maybe we circle back in a year, 18 months, and kind of just do a check-in with the board staff to see how is it going, maybe we can make tweaks and adjustments at that point in time. Because I just want to make sure that we do this right, this is a very important thing. I think this represents a lot of different groups, as we've heard come forward expressing support. So I'm excited, I hope that we can take some reflection on that email and put those in the final proposal.
Alderman Mathie.
I was just going to jump in on that and say, you know, I think that in that section, item 3A says that the people who are appointed there have to be found of solid ethical nature, and I think that that pretty much should take care of what we need to, unless there's a legal reason prohibiting us, just because, just because that's the way we've always done it, doesn't mean that's the way we have to continue to do it. So, you know, if, I like the idea that the, you know, we have a process right now where appointees are vetted and, you know, almost with references almost to, as to their character and what they've done in the community, and I would like to, I think that that should be sufficient for that particular section of it. I also, one of the things I wanted to talk about on this was how people are appointed. You know, we have some of our boards, for instance, the Planning Commission is, we try to divide the city up into quadrants and put one person from each quadrant and make sure what resident that lives in each of those areas is on this board. For the Planning Commission, I don't want to see us do something like that for this board, I think it's more important we look at a new way to do this. And one of the ideas that struck me was, we have statistics currently on how people, on, maybe by percentage of where people are being stopped and what those percentages are from the police chief, and maybe we could use those same statistics to, of, in terms of how we allocate people and how people are placed on this board, in terms of where people live in Bloomington and the frequency that they're interacting with the police. So that might make it more inclusive of the situations we're working on. And the third, the third part that I had notes on is, I just wanted to say that, you know, this, right now, the way it's written says it's a mayoral appointee, this might be one of those situations where we want to make this a full council appointee, we're having more conversations on it than, no offense to you, Mr. Mayor, but this might be bigger than the mayoral position by itself. So those are kind of the three things I wanted to voice on.
And I understand it's a structure, so regardless of the people, but how, as a political scientist, how does that work, how would that work? Larger legislatures form committees, because that's what they usually do, in order to try to create appointments like for the Congressional Budget Office. A Congressional Budget Office is a legislative appointment, but it's done through a committee. So if you have any ideas about how specifically that would work?
Well, you know, for instance, I'm on the board of the Community Healthcare Clinic, and we have a, I can't drop in the name of it right now, but it's basically a recruitment committee who goes out and solicits and tries to find the appropriate people who would be best serving on that particular board. So I know that the council has kind of gone away from the committee structure, but that's just one option of, of way to do that.
So we'd have a council committee with a specific purpose?
Yeah.
And that would bring that back to the council?
Yes, exactly.
Alderman Hellman.
Thank you. To tag on to Jamie, I also felt that the appointment should include more than your recommendation, that it should be, come from the council as a whole. Again, as Jamie said, nothing against your, how you make appointments, but this is, no offense to the Citizen Beautification Committee, but this is a little different than the Citizen Beautification Committee in terms of how it shapes our city. And the other thing I would like to suggest is that we look at this on an 18-month, give this 18 months, six months to identify the people, get the board up and run, the folks trained, the board up and running, and then a year of actual work, and then come back and evaluate the, the work that's being done and the value of it to us as a city. And I, I'm sorry, I'm jumping back and forth here a little bit, sorry. The people that are appointed, I think we need to set up, and this would probably go to the Human Resources Task Force or whatever, some criteria for the people we're looking for, not just look. for, not just location, but background. I think we need a representation of black, white, Hispanic, young, old, east side, west side. I'd like to have some kind of criteria set up for that. Thanks.
Okay. Other points. Alderman Burvis.
I just had a question based on those comments about mayoral appointment, et cetera, and council involvement, because Section 2A states that they're appointed by the mayor with approval of the city council. So I'm kind of curious what process you envision being different, because right now, we, as council, with any board and commission, have the ability to review the qualifications of people who have been suggested by the mayor and to vote yes or no on that. And I assume if we wanted more information, we could also, I've never asked for it, but I assume the mayor would also share anyone else who's applied, and we could look at that. So I'm not sure what the different processes you would be looking for.
Can I respond, Mayor?
Yes.
Yep. Usually, the, but, well, we don't have a, when they come to us, when the appointments come to us, it's on the agenda, or we may have, we may have gotten the appointments forwarded to us a little bit earlier than that from Beth, right? But in my time on council, we've only not approved one person that was recommended for appointment. So I just feel like by the, by the time the person is, is brought before us, it's, it's not too late, but it's awkward to let it go that long.
Alderman, no longer.
I also had a similar question about that, you know, especially having gone through the appointment process myself. Which was a joy. I loved it. And I would do it again. And I, if I remember correctly, I, I think we, all of the other council members, and I think Jamie went through this as well, when he was appointed, all of the nominees or potential nominees were, you know, put forward for everyone to see. So we knew who was involved in the process. And, you know, had the opportunity to turn them down, I was turned on the first time. I didn't take it personally. You know, we still did it. So I think, you know, to me, I envisioned something similar, you know, that we could do something similar. And, you know, I know that with boards-
I could just clarify that point. So essentially, you'd take a look at the pool of candidates.
Exactly.
So there'd be the enhanced council rule structurally, to take a look at the pool of candidates.
Right. You could still advance the person that you, you think that you'd like to nominate. And it is, I mean, it's advice and, and counsel, you know, from, from us, and therefore, we could turn that down if we, if we're not happy with that choice. And so I, to me, I envision something similar.
And also suggest people, I believe there's only been about two or three people in my entire time as mayor who a council member has suggested that I haven't been able to find a place for somewhere.
Right.
It may not always have been their first choice-
Right.
-as a board or commission.
But generally, I-
So it can work in both directions.
Yeah. And I don't think we've had a whole lot of competition, you know, in terms of other boards and commissions, generally.
Yeah. There are a couple here that we will.
Yeah.
Traffic in this one, I can assure you.
Probably right, yeah.
Other, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Schmidt.
Yes, Section 5 Rules and Procedures is a single sentence, and this is kind of the double in the details section. So, it says that this review board, in consultation with legal and police, will establish rules and procedures for the transaction of business. And I wonder if we could just flesh that out a little bit? Is it, do rules and procedures, are they going to be reviewed by the council, or is it just completely and internal to the review board?
I'm going to have to turn it over. I understood that this is similar to the way that other boards and commissions operate, but, Gabe?
Sure. Council members, Gabe Niebergall here. To kind of answer your question, there's a lot of ways that this could be structured in terms of the rules and procedures, so we didn't want to put a very onerous set in already. And I think the board, with the guidance of the legal department and any other participants, would be able to establish them. Some of the other cities that we looked at, Urbana being one of the chief ones, has a very structured set of procedures in the actual ordinance itself. We could implement those same types of procedures via rules just as easily as if they were in the ordinance. So there, if you're looking for specifics as to, you know, how that would happen, I can go through, but it is very detailed, the way that Urbana has done it. So that might be technical without having the document in front of you.
And those, so we'll use Urbana as an example, are those embedded in, in an ordinance? Are they part of the city code, the way many of our boards and commission process and policy is?
They are. The rules in Urbana's, for instance, are embedded in the actual code. They have the voting requirements, the different types of findings that can be issued. A lot of the structure is in place in the code itself. Here, it could be done via rule, or it could be done via code, but I think to kind of simplify the document, it was, you know, decided that we put this one forward and see what the council thought.
And I'm not suggesting that we want to micromanage that, but it does feel like that's actually the guts of this. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering most, like, will it come back around for clarity and sort of community embracing it?
Absolutely. So, yeah, so we could do it either way. We could put it directly into the ordinance with the other amendments that the council's considering today. We could also-
If we could just clarify, there's the, the types of findings, is that what you were asking?
No, well, I guess I'm thinking about, we had one of our public comments about the different ways in which you file a concern about a finding. You know, there's, there's, some of this is written in here, but, but some of it isn't. So, you know, just the, the general details of, of how this happens, so that there's transparency and clarity and common understanding about what this board does, what its, not its scope, because that's, that's addressed here, but the details of what happens.
And you, I think everybody has received a copy of the more detailed ordinance, too, the drafts a couple weeks ago.
I did, I did. It's just, it's not in this, and I-
If there are some specific things there, I don't see why it couldn't be included.
In bed, yeah.
Yeah. And I think some of it, if I'm not, I think it came, I'm not, Gabe, it wasn't you and I who chatted, but I believe it was Mr. Boyle and Mr. Jurgens and I and the city manager thought, maybe, especially since this is our first attempt-
Right.
-we keep it general. I think, is that a fair statement, I think, for this? So that it wasn't, yeah.
Correct. And I think that part of the issue here, from my perspective, is the board itself is going to have a lot of good insight as to how many types of avenues of complaint filing, the dates by which things need to be filed, the timeline that goes from the complaint being filed to getting to the chief, to getting an internal investigation, and then coming back to the board. All of those have specific dates, for instance, in Urbana, you know, 15 days, 30 days, whatever. I think that here, we were wanting to leave a lot of that to the board itself to decide what was appropriate based on their knowledge of the community.
Mayor, if I could just, one other explanation. I think the question is, many of our committees, maybe those that are maybe quasi-judicial, I'm thinking Planning Commission, Board of, and others, do have bylaws. You know, even the council has rules or procedures, so it's, it's not unusual sometimes for these committees to, to prepare and to follow, you know, some internal rules or procedure. The council can always, through ordinance, you know, mandate that all those come to the council, or maybe just some of those, or you may just say, in this particular case, by ordinance, those rules and procedures will come back to the council for review and approval. The only thing I've, I have found in, in many of these boards, sometimes they will need some flexibility to change those year to year, as things come up and they say, you know, we ought to really put that in our procedures. So, keep that in mind, but as, you know, you may want to very well start out with those being established by ordinance, but then when you do that, you know, any changes will also need to come back, but it's not necessarily what has happened with some of the others, including the Fire and Police Commission. And unfortunately, we found out there a few years back, that it had been so long since any rules or procedure or bylaws had been adopted, there was kind of a major modernizing and update of those that took place with the help of Angela Fian's Jimenez. So, just thought that might help.
Okay. Alderman Black, Bray, and Hellman. Alderman Bray.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to visit about this. I know each of us have taken the opportunity to meet with individuals in the community, staff, and various stakeholders. And I think what, what we hear is that while we have no numbers that support the outcry that we hear, we hear the outcry. I think everyone has pretty well acknowledged that. And it goes like this, relationship. So I'm encouraged when I see that the name of this proposed board is the Public Safety and Community Relations Board. Now, with that said, when I read this as it currently exists, I don't see a lot of emphasis on relationship. So I've identified three locations where I'd like to embed some relationship tasks for the board. One would be within Section 1A. It says, provide another means by which to achieve continuous improvement. I would say, provide another means by which to build relationships and achieve continuous improvement there. I'd like to focus the very first charge of this board to be building relationships, because we need to be about being good to one another and developing the kind of community where we show respect and we honor one another. And I think that's, this board could take the lead in doing that, if that's the desire of this council and the mayor.
Just to clarify, okay, so you were to achieve, which would-
So build another means by which to build relationships and achieve continuous improvement in the police-community interactions.
Okay, all right.
Would be a spot there. Second spot would be Section 8A. And there, the board is to work with the police department, the legal department, and Human Relations Commission to build community outreach in order to prevent problems and make recommendations. But, you know, let's not introduce any polarization here, let's talk about building bridges and building relationships. So with that said, Section B, to me, would, I don't know what our needs would be for Section B in an initial launching of a board of this sort. And so, I don't know. I, I hear from some this idea of kind of staging this, or let's take a breath and come back and reevaluate. So if we go forward with something like that, maybe something like that could come later. In addition to that, there, there may be a desire to do a sunset clause for a board of this nature, because one would hope that once relationships are healed and once relationships are launched, then, then we're all here together and we don't have to continue with this kind of a, I guess, an oversight piece or, or review piece. Finally, a third spot I had for relationships was in Section 8G. And that just has to do with the board in the last line, having, holding periodic meetings with the neighborhood groups and having events and with community leaders and working on building relationships to discuss community concerns relating to public safety. So, I guess that's, I'll, I'll leave it at that for now. I had several other things. I don't know if, should defer to others to speak up to their, their ideas, or Mayor, if you want me to continue?
So just to three, some fairly concrete suggestions, and then we can see if there's any concerns about those, would be under Section 1A, which to build relationships and achieve, that's correct. And then, 8A, the, the commission shall work with the police department, legal department, Human Relations Commission to build community outreach and anticipate. Is that correct?
I guess it could be that, or strike the anticipate, just because you're going to build outreach, so that's-
So you're suggesting to build community outreach and-
Prevent problems.
Prevent problems.
Mm-hmm.
And then the last one, to add relationship?
Yeah, 8G, build, well, work on building relationships would be in the last phrase.
I'm just-
And or community leaders to discuss, leaders to work on building relationships and discuss community concerns relating to public safety and police procedures.
Okay. I'm going to keep some of these ideas separate, so we can see whether we have consensus on things as we go forward. So one of the other issues was the nature of the appointment. Is it a city council commission? Is it a mayoral appointment? Is there a pool of candidates? The nature of the appointment was a question that I don't know we have consensus on, and then your amendment seemed stylistic. I can't speak for the rest of the council, so they may not be as complicated as the others. So, Alderman Black, and then Hellman.
Thank you. And we've done a couple of these now, where we've had these community, the whole meetings, and talked about ordinances before we get to the final meeting, which I think is hoping to give more clarification to staff, and so we don't, we can take some of these adjustments before the final product, and I think that's the right approach, especially here. And what I like about it is reflecting on some of my colleagues' perspectives and a couple of things. Right now, I don't know if you know this offhand, I think it requires a simple majority for a mayoral appointment, is that correct? Perhaps we can by ordinance turn into a two-thirds, and that may speak to some of the concerns about the community. When I hear committees and I hear complicat, I mean, that just sounds overwhelming, and it sounds like it would be a hindrance to people wanting to get involved, where if it's a mayoral appointment, you can send it forward, requires a two-thirds, and then go from there.
And Alderman, if I can, I, we certainly will look into that. I think we'll probably have some statutory requirements that really vest the appointment power in the mayor. So, the discussion about an alternative to that, we'll get you a legal opinion whether or not that's even feasible. Sometimes even the process appointment can be changed, you know, to give the council more opportunities instead of this appointment, and you see it on the same council agenda. Some cities have a staged approach, and we can kind of come back with some options there that gives the council maybe a work session to consider appointments prior to actual voting. There's many ways to look at that, but just wanted to let you know, we'll get you an opinion on those issues that have been run.
Perfect. And then piece number two, Karen's point about the rules and operating procedure, I think perhaps at least for that, that initial timeframe, maybe all bylaws, operational process has to come through the council for approval, just so we can take a look at it and make sure that there's some, some sign-off. And perhaps as we circle back, say, 18 months after December 2018, just put on the calendar, that may become one of those questions that we, we take a look to see how it's working, if cumbersome, and go from there. Because that point is very well taken, that we, you know, we want to make sure that we're in sync with what's going on at the board. And Kim's suggestions, I'm on board with. I don't know about the sunset clause piece, but it may be just a revisit at some point in time down the road, I think would suffice. But I like the idea of community building, and, you know, maybe we throw in there, too, you know, in Section 8G, at least two, two events per year that the leadership is taken on by the PC, PS CRB, just because that way we're being clear about numbers and metrics, so we can have those smart goals. So that's my feedback at this point.
Alderman Hellman and Sage.
Thanks. And I also appreciate Alderman Bray's positive, looking at some positive language in this. Could we talk about the elephant in the room? Section 3, Item C, a person with a criminal felony conviction shall be eligible to serve on the board. That was brought up by several people that made public comments, and I think we should talk about that as a, as a council before we go further.
And then there are other, one possibility also, not necessarily that anybody, you know, how, whether this would get the council some majority support, but you could say a person with a violent criminal felony conviction, or not have it at all, but, so-
Because I think part of it goes back to-
Go ahead.
That first item, all members shall possess a reputation of fairness, integrity, impartiality in a sense of public service. And I don't know that I want to see somebody that's, you know, convicted killer who's just been released from jail beyond, released from prison beyond the board, but only for the grace of God, do I probably not have something on my record from earlier days.
All right. I'm going to go with that.
You want to elaborate?
No. No. I was, I just didn't happen to be at the right place at the wrong time, so, and, and I think, I think many of us have probably experienced that, when we do, when we reflect on where we are today versus where we were, depending on how old- When we reflect on where we are today versus where we were, depending on how old we were, you know, several decades ago. So, part of me says, you know, the... When a person has served their time, that they're brought back into the community. So, again, do I want to... You know, somebody that's with a violent past, probably not, but somebody... I mean, you write three bad checks and you can be... You've got a felony. So, I mean, is that a reason for keeping somebody off the board? So, I just think we should talk about that a little bit, and I'd like to get a sense of other people's thoughts on that.
I think we need to get a sense of that before we finish tonight, where the council seems to be.
Okay. Nobody brought that particular item up, so I was wondering...
Thank you. And I think it was the 800-pound elephant or whatever in the room. Alderman, Sage.
Thank you. So, this is our second public conversation about this. I've listened now to two different sections of public comment. I've considered the comments that the chief made during our first public conversation about this. And I will look to some of my aldermen, my fellow aldermen, to help me understand. The one specific issue that I've heard raised... And the chief did, I thought, an excellent job of outlining exactly how the process works as it exists today, including the appeal process to the city manager, to the mayor, and onto the council if needed. So, I need to circle back because to the question that I asked last time, and that is, the one question I've heard raised during now two rounds of public comment was this issue of concern about accessing the process. And that is that folks felt uncomfortable having to go to the police department and initiate that complaint. During our last public conversation, I heard the chief of police outline that, including many of the public organizations that were highlighted in one of the public comments here tonight, that the chief would be open to having those groups work with folks who wanted to file complaints, who perhaps were uncomfortable dealing directly with the police department. And so, the one... Again, the one problem I've heard articulated publicly, and I understand there are perceptions, there's innuendo, there's other comments that are made, but what I've heard stated publicly is concern about accessing the existing process. I've heard no other negative comments made publicly about any other part of the process that the chief outlined during our first conversation. And so, the... I guess the question I would ask is if the problem is this idea of accessing the process, and the chief has said, "I'm glad to let upwards of a half a dozen community groups kind of be involved and advocate and participate in that process of submitting a complaint," then what other problems are we trying to address with this proposed ordinance? Because I've only heard that one articulated now in at least two public conversations we've had about it.
No, I'm sorry. Public comment is over. I'm sorry. Did you want to finish?
Well, I... So, I guess I'm asking that... That's not meant to be a rhetorical question. It's a question to you. I'd appreciate some conversation because, again, what I've heard articulated publicly is concern about initiating the complaint and feeling some measure of being either intimidated or overwhelmed by that, at which point the chief has said, "Look, I'll be glad to work with multiple community organizations to help alleviate and, in fact, you know, perhaps eliminate that concern so that somebody doesn't have to feel like they're doing that on their own."
Sure. Okay. I think at one level, I think what we can say is that even if, let's say, Brendan Hefner, actually, in my judgment, is probably one of our most outstanding police chiefs in a very long time, but he won't be there forever, right? So, that's one thing, so there's a structure. The other is, I think, at 1,000 feet, generally speaking, the logic for police review boards is that there's a civilian additional set of eyes on a military, paramilitary organization. And I think that's the history of American democracy and what tends to separate modern democracies from Third World countries, you know? And that doesn't mean that every city has to have it. I'm just... I'm staying at 1,000 feet. So, I think that's the overall rationale. There have been some specific things. When we had many mayoral open houses, there were specifically people brought up specific stuff. I have no idea the veracity of any of those. I have encouraged people to figure out a way to file those complaints. I don't know whether they had been. So, other than getting into the weeds, I think that's what the structural rationale would be, in other words, one or...
So, and I appreciate that. So, again, what I heard you describe was perhaps future, perhaps hypothetical situations, a different police chief, a review of... I'm not sure I heard the word "paramilitary," but there's some review process of operations.
Yes, civilian over paramilitary or military organizations, yeah.
And again, so I would say... I would reiterate, I haven't heard any actual problems articulated. And if we're not articulating actual problems, then I would suggest that at some level we have a solution looking for a problem here. And I get concerned about that. I get concerned about the unintended consequences when we have a solution looking for a problem. And again, I've waited here now through at least two rounds of public comment and perhaps some additional comments that happened. And if our chief has said he would wholeheartedly, you know, be more than happy about working with some community groups to allow folks to access that... The existing process that we have, then, again, I'm interested in what if... I've not heard another problem articulated. I've heard a solution articulated, but no problem articulated beyond the issue of accessing the system. Thank you.
Again, just to clarify, I think you did say a chief, and I think that's the point, a chief, maybe not necessarily all chiefs. And I think the... Again, even if there's just a perception problem, I think the fact that this room is packed tonight suggests that there's at least a perception problem of what we need to be doing. But Alderman, excuse me, Matthew.
I think that the problem, as I see it, is a trust issue. It's perception gone further than perception into there's a significant trust issue with Our community and the police department. And we're... The problem we're trying to solve is how do we repair that lack of trust? And how do we move back into a situation where citizens believe that, you know... My understanding right now, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but if there's a complaint against an officer, the investigation, the review of that officer and the findings are... Well, everything except for either sustained or not sustained are closed to the public. So, I'm not even... I mean, I'm not even sure because it's a personnel issue that it could even be released via Freedom of Information Act. I don't... And I'm not 100% sure that we can see those at city council. Maybe I could be wrong on that one. But so, this is... The citizen review board puts another set of eyes and another layer from the public that can look at that, and, you know, they don't... All they have is the authority right now as an advisory to say, you know, that maybe there's a different way that we would have approached this and we would have looked at this in the future, but it's... We're just... What we're trying to do is we're trying to repair what right now feels to me as a significant lack of trust and the perception right now.
And thank you. Thank you, Jamie. I appreciate that. So, again, I would come back and say that we're trying to correct by ordinance, by law, perceptions that may or may not partly be based in reality, and I understand it. That's my concern is, why not a more incremental approach to, as perhaps the chief suggested, with first working with community groups to encourage them to be... To encourage folks to be more comfortable accessing the existing process rather than kind of jumping to the setup of another group of review when I'm not even sure there's a problem. I've not heard anybody articulate a problem, you know, other than access. And so, my concern is then that we have a solution looking for a problem, and that will have unintended consequences that we can't fully anticipate here now.
Doesn't that conversation and the chief working with community groups, doesn't that already exist? Doesn't... Isn't it...
MAP.
Was that the name of it? Or is that the correct name of it? But I thought that that already existed and was... I don't know that it's being used. I don't know that, you know, it's... I don't know that it's working. Nobody seems to know who's appointed on that. Nobody seems to know which community groups are representative on there and who should be talking that conversation. So, it seems like it's... An approach that's been tried before and not worked, maybe. I mean, that's my perception on it right now.
That's another perception.
Yeah.
Okay. Alderwoman Schmidt, and then we're actually close to running out of time, which we can extend. Alderwoman Schmidt? I actually think we'll have to...
I would add on to what Jamie is saying, that the current procedure has... If someone doesn't understand or doesn't agree with the resolution of their complaint, there is no other avenue. There's no additional understood, commonly understood procedure for knowing how that review of a complaint reached a certain decision. And to me, this is an opportunity for us to continue the continuum, if you'll excuse my bad English there, to build on that continuum of community policing, of commonly shared understanding about the decisions that police have to make. I think there's an educational opportunity here. I appreciate what Kim was talking about with community relation building. I heard that articulated very, very clearly, not just how do you turn in a complaint, but what happens if you don't like the outcome of it? And this is, to me, a powerful part of that community conversation and some shared understanding.
Okay. Alderman Black?
I don't know if I'll be as articulate as my colleagues here. I appreciate your concerns, and these are good to think about as we start doing some more of these types of boards and commissions. And I couldn't help, as you were asking these questions, to be drawn to the backup material and the report that we were given, the civilian oversight of law enforcement. And on page 10, it goes through the potential strength of a review-focused model. And one of the parts that I want to highlight, it's all pretty interesting stuff, and they cite the Urbana model as one that can be used as an example. "Beyond public perception, review-focused agencies have the benefit of allowing community representatives to bring an outsider's perspective to the complaint investigation process, which may help jurisdictions identifying correct deficiencies within individual complaint investigations." So, from where I sit, this is one piece of a larger puzzle. And we talk about community policing isn't always going to be a negative. I think that this board has the opportunity to not only bring a perspective and that engagement like Karen was talking about, but it also has the opportunity to build those relationships with the community so we don't see some of the issues that we see in other municipalities. And the sense that I've gotten from the community is that there are people who feel as though their voice won't be heard systematically. And as an elected official, I have to take pause when I hear that. And while, you know, we hear anecdotes and we look at data, and you can take data and look at it a lot of different ways, what I'm seeing here is a proposal that creates an avenue, creates an institution that has the ability to address concerns, but also turn positive things into reality. And that's why, you know, when Kim brought up the points about adding in some of that more community relationship verbiage, I think that's an excellent idea and would be a huge asset to the board itself. But I don't know if it's a solution in search of a problem. I think that it's a solution that I think we're going to find the best fit for our community because you can look across this country and a lot of the... A lot of municipalities are doing these sorts of boards and commissions, and they all do different things and they all have different staff processes and such. But I think this might be a good fit for us, and we can, again, circle back in 18 months and see if it's doing what we want it to do, is it following what we need to follow, and is it truly in touch with what the community is? Because it doesn't always have to be just negative, but it can be a positive influence in our community.
Okay. Okay. Alderwoman Painter, we haven't heard from you.
Yeah, I haven't spoken yet, and it's because this I am more conflicted about than I have been any other decision I've made on council. I, in the beginning, thought this was a great idea. I was all for it. And I realize that there is a national problem with people trusting the police. There have been horrible things that have happened, and I think that it's really good for us to tackle those things on the local level. I was with you right up until the deal where you want people who've been convicted criminals to serve on this board, and you are so adamant about it. And, I mean, that just makes no sense to me at all. I think that there are many places where people can serve their community after they have served their time. I think that any other board and commission in Bloomington would be fine, except for this one. I don't think police should be allowed to serve on this commission either. I think that you need to really look for impartiality. And, you know, I've talked this over with representatives from many different organizations. My own faith community is totally on board with this, but I just can't go for that because the police are very resistant to that idea, and I think for good reason. And if your main goal is to build relationships, I think that that would be a killer right out of the box. And I want for this to work. I don't want this to be a forum for people with an ax to grind, to get even. I want this to work. And I'm still up in the air about this because of that one provision, and that's where I stand.
Just to clarify, it's in the current ordinance, it's not in there?
I know it's not there, except my inbox has been flooded with people saying that I must make sure that that is a provision. And I'm sorry, I can't go for that.
Well, at the end of the day, it's the... Obviously, it's the majority voted the council a week from tonight.
Right.
And actually, at this point, if we can get some sense of the council on a couple of things... Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman, the one way.
Sure, sure. Let me see. I wanted to take a crack at the question that Alderman Sage asked. And what I do recognize is that there will be people on different sides of this issue. What's undeniable, though, to me, is that there is a perception issue that's there, whether real or not. I, you know, I do not like, you know, painting people with a broad brush. So, I would say that I know that we, you know, we do have police officers who do a really good job. We have, just like any other organization, we have a police chief, you know, who has done the best that he can to put together a complaint process that would allow him to address some of the issues that are brought forward to him. However, at this point, you know, given the fact that we still hear that there is this sort of perception, I think it will be in our best interest to try to address it. And, you know, it seems that the... At least at this point, you know, the consensus community, you know, in terms of the community, is to go with this board. And if we... And we may even find out that, you know, the issues that are raised, you know, we may find out that the police is actually doing a better job than we thought through this process. So, I, you know, rather than, you know, fighting the idea of the board, and I use the word "fighting"... "fighting" because I can't think of another one. But, you know, I think we should just, let's just move forward, because I think if we stand in front of the process and try to stop it, it will make it seem as though there is something to hide. And I think, you know, it helps everyone, for all of us, to do the best we can and to be as transparent as we can. In terms of the section, what is it, 3A? No, 3C, sorry. In terms of that particular section, I have mixed feelings about this, because I think, you know, this board, the way I perceive it, is very sensitive. It's a very sensitive issue. And if we, and I think everyone is going to be, you know, I mean, we've talked about the mayor making his appointment earlier. So everyone involved in this process is going to be scrutinized for whatever decision that they make. So I think, in my opinion, you know, this is something that we can think about over the next couple of weeks, you know. Who we put on the board is going to be scrutinized, you know. And if we want this to work, I think it has to be, we have to be in a situation where, I mean, anyone, you know, can pass, you know, whatever level of scrutiny. And I think, so I, you know, I would say we do need to think about that over the next couple of weeks. Because if we want this to work, you know, it has to be something that all of us are, you know, are, you know, as satisfied as we can. And I just, I just feel like, you know, this is going to be a very difficult situation. So, I don't know. I think at this point, I'm rambling, but I'll just stop.
Okay. Alderman Bray, and then Burgess, and then I'm going to come back on a consensus on several of these points, so we can give staff direction.
So I had two things. One relates to financial impacts. And we have a provision at the end, Section 9, staff assistance, that seems to be rather broad, to give access to staff, and this could get expensive. So I'm thinking that we need a financial impact, perhaps of that, or maybe some restraining language, that the city manager shall review and consider requests for assistance, and possibly to bring it to the city council before our staff is kind of taken into the various areas to do different tasks and different work for this particular board. Because again, I would see this board as a board that's there to build relationship and to fill this gap Karen's talked about. But I don't want to see this board polarizing our community or taking our staff into expensive studies and endeavors that I don't think that would benefit us at this juncture.
But I think the one thing Mr. Hale can kind of weigh in is that I think mostly, if there would be a staff liaison to the board, for current staff, wouldn't be a new staff position. And if they wanted to do their own research, they can certainly do it. Maybe get partners at Illinois Westland, Illinois State to help. But if they wanted to spend any money, they have to go through the city manager. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Hale?
First, let me say that trying to put together some sort of cost or, you know, impact is going to be very difficult. I think, as the mayor said, you know, and the research, some of these committees or commissions have very few, or a very low workload. On the other hand, you know, they're very reactive. On the other hand, if this is going to be a commission that's more proactive, really gets into a lot of time and issues, studies, things like that, yes, they could put an impact. But I think that's when we could come back to the council and say, you know, just like the Transportation Commission, here's what we're trying to do, but the resource requirements are growing, and it's going to take more resources than we have available or budgeted. And we can bring that issue back to the council and seek, you know, approval for additional resources. But it's all going to, in many ways, could depend on just, you know, how proactive or reactive the commission's going to be to complaints and the other items that are mentioned in this ordinance. Does that help?
Thank you, that helps, that helps. And then the second piece, perhaps maybe for Gabe, and it relates to potentially adding a section that relates to the, I guess, scoping this ordinance overall, to say that no civil action may accrue from the material generated by the board, nor may any board materials be used as evidence in any civil action. In other words, we're not trying to create any causes of action here, we're not trying to support anything of that nature. Again, this is about relationships and about trying to build up our community through creation of this board.
So just to clarify, if the board were to say, in their advice, back to the chief, "We recommend something different from what you have done," maybe some suggestions, that that suggestion could not be used?
The idea would be that none of the material that comes from the board could be used in civil litigation. So for instance, if someone had an allegation against a particular police officer, and then they wanted to file suit in regards to that, and then perhaps, you know, they wanted to point to some trend that they had, the board had published on, or a study the board had done, that's really not the function of this particular board as created. But Gabe, I know we've got some governmental immunity here, but I'm not sure how it would play with something of that nature.
Sure. That's actually a pretty common provision in these, from what I've reviewed.
Okay.
I think we add language in that in the other ordinance that was sent to council at the same time, so that would be easy to add.
We could add that in.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Now, there's actually a, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Burgess.
Go ahead, if you wanted to say something.
No, I was at this point going to sort of wrap up, to hit the five items that we had some questions on.
Sure. Okay, then I'll quickly weigh in, because I think the point of contention, it sounds like we have the most, is 3C, and whether or not it would be appropriate to keep that provision or remove it. And I want to start with the notion that I'm very sympathetic to the request that we remove it. Because I find it very concerning that, knowing nothing else about an individual, we can define them as a single thing, a criminal. I think it's dehumanizing. And I think it marginalizes people and contributes to our recidivism rates, and I find that very concerning. That being said, we're not going to fix that through this commission. And when we talk about trust and building relationships, I think we also have to be concerned about the fact that the police officers who work very hard in our community are very concerned about whether or not they will have a fair playing field when it comes to this commission. I have yet to hear anyone ask for special treatment, but what I'm asking is that they want to make sure that everyone who comes to the table has an open mind. And this is a provision they feel strongly about, because they believe it will help ensure that those open minds are there. So I don't like to be indecisive, but I have these conflicting values here that I'm struggling with. So I would simply, I personally am going to need some more time to think about it, and I would love to hear additional feedback from all people involved to talk about this a little bit more in detail, about whether or not this is an acceptable compromise in this particular situation, given this special set of circumstances and the very, very large culture shift and change in outlook that we're looking for. Thank you.
And just to be clear, you know, if we go around and the council's divided on this, we probably would go with whatever, if it's five, four or so, we'd probably go with whatever the five said. If somebody changes their mind, that's a pretty surgical, quick thing, in either way, whichever one it might be. But at this point, let me start out with, oh, Alderman Sage.
And I'm going to, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with you on that, Mayor. I mean, we've made it clear tonight that there would be no votes taken. That, while that might not be a recorded vote, it would in fact be a vote in kind, and...
But that's what we're here for, I think, to give, this is what we usually use these sessions for, to give staff direction as to what to bring to us.
And I understand, but I guess I'd also want to know, I want to make sure staff has the opportunity to make sure that they've looked over everything that's legal or statutory related to the board membership. So that's why, I mean, I know there's a great haste, seemingly to me, to get this done sooner rather than later. But as some have suggested, if in fact we want to do this right, this may not be ready to go on the agenda next Monday.
I think we have been spending about six months on it, at least, a little more than that, but anyway. Let me...
But the council has spent six months on it.
I think many in the council have spent more than six months on it. Do we have our first meeting in February?
Yeah.
Pretty close.
It's a public...
Yeah, yeah. Okay, right. Okay, at this point, we've got several issues, and I'm going to start with the one that I think that are probably the easiest. Go from the... Alderman Bray asked for several changes that I reiterated. Are there any problems with having staff include those in a draft of this ordinance? Okay.
Which ones are, which ones are out there?
Oh, the ones that I re, again, item, the building relationships under 1A, A, under 7A, excuse me, 8A, thank you, build community outreach and, and then G, thank you, under relationships, community relationship. So this was really kind of wordsmithing. Okay, all right. So that's one. Alderman Schmidt had raised some questions about more details. Are we, maybe I'll ask you, Alderman Schmidt, because she brought it up, would you be okay with us putting in here that there are bylaws as there need to come and be cleared through the council?
I think that would be, that would be good, not just for us, but for the community as a whole.
For the community as a whole. And then we can also, assuming this passes and everything, we can, if we decide, as has been alluded to in this discussion, change this, tweak this, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel, but we also know that there are going to be changes in our community, and sometimes we don't do things right the first time. So, okay, so that, can we work, Gabe, you got some language there that'd be okay? And then you did, well, for the record, we have Alderman Bray's. Now, we have the mayoral appointment stuff, and I think you're going to need to do some, as City Manager Hale suggested, there are some things that councils can't inhibit mayoral appointments regardless of form of government. And obviously, we've got about 15 different forms of government in the city, or in the state of Illinois, but which, you know, in our particular one, can we have a supermajority? That might be one of them. Or, as Alderman Longway suggested, having a pool of applicants that the council can see? I would assume at the very least we could do that.
Sure.
And probably, I mean, I could just, hey, come into my office, look at them. So it could be, as long as I, I mean, not more than two at a time. But, so there's certainly got to be some way that we can get more council inputs, that the council feels more involved in this, even if there's no supermajority, or if we can't do some of the other things. But can you, you got direction on that? I don't think anybody opposed that.
What is it you're asking? Do you ask him to research that as an option?
What are the options? What are the legal options that we have?
Okay.
Okay. And so if we, do we have the legal option, on one hand, of perhaps sharing the pool of applicants? Do we also have the option of having a supermajority required, right, for the mayor's nominees? Do we have the option of doing a separate committee of the city council to come up with nominees? So I would think those are the three things, and those could be presented as three items, assuming that the council decides that this is okay and we're right for this, you're okay with the direction you have there. Okay. Now we have the, whatever metaphor we're using, 800-pound gorilla in the room, and I am going to ask where the council's coming from, assuming on the item 3C, "No person with a criminal felony conviction shall be eligible to serve on the PSC RB." And at least at this point, do we include it? Or is it removed? Or is it amended to include violent? As I see it, I think those are our three options, if I could just go around and get a general sense of what people are thinking. Kim?
Well, I think another option might be to timeframe this thing. So no person with a criminal felony conviction within the past seven years, or statute limitation, or something like that.
Okay.
You know, if you added something like that, so that indiscretions of youth are not counted against a mature adult who's now well past that. I mean, perhaps that might be an option.
Okay, that made me better than some of the others. Okay. So you're in favor of some sort of, you're saying seven years, which is typical statute limitation?
I'm not sure what the number might be, if Gabe, I might have an opinion on that, but in other words...
Do you have an opinion on that, Gabe?
I don't think I have a legal opinion, so I don't, I'm...
Okay, well, okay.
I think you can do kind of whatever the council wants to do on this issue. Like I said, most of what I've reviewed have something similar. We actually, in this case, went with a less onerous language than in Urbana. Urbana actually has the next extra word, their conviction or plea. So we've actually pared it back a little bit to allow for other circumstances that just resulted in a conviction. But as far as legal things that constrain the council's decision, there are not very many on this issue. So whatever you want to do in terms of timeframe would be up to the council.
Okay. So, Alderman Bray, you're suggesting compromise?
Maybe there might be a timeframe, but I'm open to, I'm sensitive to Alderman Painter's concerns and what timeframe might feel comfortable for her to gain support, or maybe it's none at all, I don't know.
Okay. Alderman Hellman.
I like the idea of some kind of a statute of limitations, but could we also consider no more than one person per class? I mean, I know we're going to be, there's going to be a two-year term, or two, two, and three people appointed, that going forward, then, as new people are appointed...
I think you have equal, I would assume you'd have equal protection issues. So in other words, let's say if there was somebody who has an, and again, the attorneys can weigh in on that, but let's say you've got one, if you're saying no more than one person has a felony, let's say, okay?
Per class.
Per class. Then if there's somebody with a felony on, then the probability of that person being able to be appointed is zero. Whereas other similarly situated people, if they had a felony and nobody on the board had a felony, that would be...
You're talking about one out of two people.
No, I'm just, Gabe, do you understand where I'm going with that? I mean, I'm just, I'm wondering if there's an equal protection issue there, because any individual's probability of being able to be appointed to this board would be dependent upon other people who have constituted the board.
It's been a...
Not if it's per class?
Yeah.
If you're talking about classes of felony, it's a class of people.
No, you get, there's a class, so the, I use the term class. So you've got, you're rotating people off the board every three years.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
So the first...
There's the probability distribution, yeah. So you can either, you'd either have a possibility or zero. I don't know, Gabe?
I would need time to research this one.
Okay.
It's been a while since I was in law and law school, so this is an issue I'd have to research that.
Okay.
And I mean, that was just a suggestion.
Okay.
If the other members aren't interested, then...
Okay. But you're interested in, at this point, I'm just putting you down as a compromise on this issue. Alderman Black.
Yeah, that got really confusing. And I would say, to at least get the ball rolling, I'd like to see, I mean, I'm okay with it as presented. If there was a time box on it, I think seven years is a reasonable number. But I think this is why we need to put something on the calendar in the future to circle back to figure out if this is working the way that we want it to. So I guess to your question, I'm okay with it as presented, but I would move to, you know, within the last seven years' conviction. But I don't want to break it down by types of felonies or number of people per, that's too much.
I don't think that's what Alderman, Alderman Schmidt.
Yeah, I'm pretty conflicted about this one, too. The concept of redemption is a very important principle. I think I'm leaning towards leaving it as is, but I would like to see this language of compromise, because, you know, as Diana said, you know, there but for the grace of God go I. And, you know, I certainly know lots of people and love lots of people who have made mistakes that took them down one path and not the other. So if we could figure out some way around this, I think I could...
So you were open to the, we'll call it the potential Bray amendment.
The Bray amendment, yeah, that's fine.
All right, at this point, I'm sorry, Alderman Painter.
Well, like I said, I'm real, real...
Well, like I said, I'm real, real conflicted about this whole thing, and I would like to see us try and work things out as is, and if things are going well, then maybe we could revisit this issue. I do believe in redemption, I do believe that there are many boards and commissions in our city that they could serve on. I don't understand why they feel so strongly about this one. You know, on the other side of it, I mean, if it would make the police feel more comfortable, maybe if we let people that have prior felony convictions be on this board, how would everybody feel about having police officers be on this board? No, I don't think you'd like it. And I just, I want everybody to consider the other side's feelings in this, because we want to foster better relationships, we don't want to make things worse.
Okay.
So I'm open to hearing what a compromise might be, but right now, I'm real skeptical.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Burgess?
I would love a compromise.
You would love a compromise. Okay. Alderman Wambly?
Hey, here comes the long-winded guy again. Yes, I'm still very conflicted, you know, about this, because I think the, like I said, the ultimate goal is to be able to achieve better relations. And if, from the beginning, we start with, I mean, it's bad enough already, the reason why we're here is because, you know, we're saying there's perception or trust issues, and if we start from the get-go with something where one side is not feeling very good about this, it might be a little bit difficult, I think. So I think, you know, in my opinion, this may not sound like the most popular thing to say, but I think we need to start, you know, with baby steps, so slowly, and build confidence in each other, and so that we become better partners with each other, and eventually, we can revisit this issue in 18, 20 months. And I also would add that, you know, it sounds like, just from the conversation up here, you know, there's different understandings of, you know, what's a felony, and what's this, and what's that. So I, you know, when I have these sort of situations, it makes me kind of feel uncomfortable. You know, I think we need to get a, you know, just like Gabe said himself, you know, he needs to do some research, you know, so these situations...
You're saying then you would support keeping the felony conviction prohibition in the ordinance?
Let's keep it as is, and then with room down the line to make some changes if we need to. Let's build confidence with one another.
Okay. Alderman Sage?
And so again, I'm going to have some additional conversations with some folks on both sides of the issue this coming week, and so while I'm not prepared to, you know, kind of publicly declare support for this concept, for this particular question, I would support it as presented, and again, for a number of reasons that I think Amboka has suggested.
Okay. Alderman Mathie?
So I would prefer that 3C be removed, because to me, a lot of the folks that we, we've had conversations, for instance, around violent felons are going to be eliminated in 3A to start with, with a reputation for fairness and integrity and stuff, that's, all those folks are going to be out of the pool immediately when we hit 3A, before we even keep going down the list of requirements. However, I would definitely say you can put me in the compromise category if removal of 3C is a deal breaker and we have no action moving forward. I'd rather see something happen than nothing, so...
Okay, all right. Okay. On that, by my count, we definitely have lots of aldermen and women with misgivings, some want to keep it as is, but I have, by my count, six, two-thirds of the aldermen are in, or at least open to some sort of compromise as suggested by Alderman Bray. So as you're putting that together, and of course, if there are changes of mind, then we can, you know, visit that next week, or whenever this is. We have felony conviction, criminal felony conviction within the last seven years shall be eligible, shall not be eligible to serve. All right, okay. All right. I believe we had all of the issues, those were the main issues or concerns. Alderman Black?
I don't want to lose sight of my email that got sent earlier today, that had a couple of small cosmetic adjustments.
Okay, would you want to repeat those?
Well, I would encourage the council to read that, the email from Jeff, but let me pull it up here. Namely, it was focusing on changing in 36, yeah, to, from he or she to complainant.
I'm sorry, number six, did you say?
Yeah, hold on, I don't have it pulled up here.
Section six?
Section six, yes.
If a complainant, and you wanted it citizen, or what would you say?
No, it says he.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, I got it here. So it would just be taken out, it's under Section six, it's not saying he or she, it would be saying that the complainant, whoever's filing the complaint, if they want to take it back to the board.
If a, then the complaint?
Yeah, I think you're missing it here, hold on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was trying to put this in writing so we'd avoid this situation. Section six, if a complainant is not satisfied with the determination of the police chief at the conclusion of the internal investigation...
Oh, he or she here, I see.
The complainant may request, may request, because I just think clarity is good and such. And then, sorry, I'm bouncing between windows here again, because just consider those in there. Right, just some clarification on citizen versus resident, or maybe a more broad term.
Was that between six?
Throughout.
Okay. Citizen versus...
I want something more broad, and necessarily be resident.
Not resident necessarily.
Right, so I don't know what the correct legal term would be, but the spirit of what I'm looking for is that somebody that encompasses anyone that's having an issue, whether they live here, whether they don't live here, something that encompasses that.
Okay, are there any objections to those? Okay, I think we're good. All right. At this point, thank you all for coming, thank you all, council, obviously, this is a difficult issue, and at this point, I would, oh, excuse me.
I think we talked about bringing this to the council next Monday. I would like to have more time than that, because if we don't get this until Thursday, or Friday, to review, I would like to...
How long would it, do you think it would take you to receive this? Or to make those changes?
It wouldn't take very long if I didn't have it on schedule on Friday.
Okay.
I'd like a little bit more time, but I could get it done.
Okay, well, let's say, if you can't get it done within the next couple of days, then we will, if the city manager's okay with this, we can put it on the next regularly scheduled council meeting? Again, these...
He won't be here next Monday.
And I won't be here next Monday. That's true.
I mean, I think, since you won't be here next Monday, I think that questions regarding your appointments and some of the other process...
Fair enough.
I mean, I could impose them on you, but...
Okay. City Manager Hale, since we jointly put this together, are you okay with us then putting this on the first meeting in July?
Sure, I think it's as directed by the council, so...
Okay, and I think that, in spite of your obligation on Friday, we should be able to get this into people's hands in plenty of time for them to think about it, and I don't mean just the council, but obviously also citizens. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn by several people. Moved by Alderman Black, seconded by Alderman Schmidt, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.